Doug, was that rain out the window or what were you showing us? Because it was kind of blurry.
Oh, I was showing you this.
Oh, construction.
A little bit blurry because the windows are covered with dust. And the Jack cameras are going even at eight o'clock in the morning on a Friday.
Angie, if you could unmute Commissioner DeBones phone call in, that would be helpful. I think he is giving him some grief to do that.
Okay, so I was using my iPhone to unmute, but I had to use star six. Am I here now?
You are. Good morning.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Yeah, so I'm at the airport, so I apologize. But I'm got a laptop and I'm focused. I got the legislative report up. Thanks, everybody for being a little flexible this morning. Yeah, let's just start at the top. I heard you mention, Doug, that you may have to step out, so go ahead and take the lead for a moment.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Good morning. Happy Friday. It's beautiful sunny day over here in the Capitol in Salem. The birds are singing, the sky is blue, the sun is shining. But always not, always not peachy. I'd say it's the Twin Towers of Events occurred this week. The first event that occurred was the revenue forecast, which came out on Wednesday. Sent out a little update for a few of you on Wednesday morning. The revenue forecast is up a staggering amount. It's shockingly high. I don't think anyone expected the numbers that were released on Wednesday. The increase in expected tax revenue has grown by $1.8 billion since the March forecast. That's a record increase in from one forecast to another. The kicker is now expected to be $5.547 billion, by far the largest. In fact, the previous estimate of $3.9 billion was the largest back in March. So this eclipses that. The corporate kicker, which the voters decided goes to K through 12, is $1.821 billion. That money goes directly to K through 12, so that's a huge windfall benefit for schools in Oregon. And that's even before the Ways and Means Committee decides how much to increase from the general fund budget. So schools will get quite a bit of money from this added influx of tax revenue. Lottery bonds were lottery revenues were flat down a little bit, but that still means they were up from the original forecast way back when. So there shouldn't be a shortage of dollars for capital construction projects, i.e. the courthouse project. Let's see other other takeaways. One of the interesting takeaways out of the revenue forecast is that the percentage of earners in the top bracket for Oregon, which is 9.9%, grew from 3.5% to 5.3%. That's a pretty large increase in the number of people in that top bracket. So the combination of that continued low unemployment, so people are still working. And also the capital gains taxes that people paid at the beginning of 2022, anticipating a crash in the market, which, you know, bless those people, they got out in time before the market crashed. It's generated this gigantic windfall, so that that means the Ways and Means is beginning to kind of digest those numbers, figure out, you know, what is available, what they want to allocate for the billions of dollars requests that let's letters have made, including our five let's letters from from the Deshute County area. And and that will be all made kind of behind closed doors, and we won't know the outcome of those decisions until a day before, maybe an hour before the the work session on the Ways and Means, particular Ways and Means budget at the end of the session. So so that's tower number one. Twin Tower number two is the looking boycott walkout of the floor sessions. That by yesterday, 10 of the 11 Republicans had reached 10 days, which is the threshold that was in the ballot measure. That will be challenged in court after the session. Ameri County judge determined in March that it was not the appropriate time to act on the appeal back then because no one had reached the 10. So now 10 have reached the 10. And then the 11th has been on a medical leave for a rod, and then there are two independents, and one of those independents has also reached the limit. So so we'll see what happens. I would say on that that way above my pay grade, but the two sides are are not close together on any sort of an agreement as far as I can tell. So this could drag on for a few weeks. Meanwhile, the building continues to operate as usual. Joint Tax Committee is meeting right now. Republicans and Democrats are both there in the Revenue Committee the other day. You know, Republicans, Senate Republicans were there and participating. The only place they are not participating is 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 on the Senate floor where they they don't show up, they don't walk down the stairs, and they don't get counted in the quorum. So other than that, the building is operating. Joint Transportation Committee met last night with Senate Republicans and House Republicans and House and Senate Democrats. So so the building continues to operate, work continues to get done, just not on the Senate floor. And the House floor continues to operate. So that's a quick update. I think I'll pause there.
Thank you very much, Doug. So do we have any legislators with us today?
I think we will, starting at 8:30. Not not quite sure who, but I think at 8:30 we'll start having people come in. Although if we see someone, Whitney, flag that for me. I'm on my phone, so it's hard to hard to see.
Great. So we have a couple items in the legislative report, and then also a letter or two. Whitney, if you want to take the lead on that, please.
Can I ask a question for?
Oh, please.
So Doug, there are a number of bills. Drought package, that child emergency psychiatric center bill, the tax foreclosed property bill, HB 3440. There's a number of bills that I'm tracking that are pretty far along the way in the process. What happens to those bills at this point? I mean, I've heard some things about, you know, some of the senators have offered to come back for 12 hours at the very end of the session to crank through some major stuff. But, you know, these, you know, these these smaller bills, you know, what will happen to them in in various potential scenarios?
Good question, Commissioner. The I if I had to predict, I predict that what would happen is if at some point an agreement is reached, that there will be a list of bills that both Republicans and Democrats have prioritized, and they could both accept. That's what happened in 2019. In about a day and a half, the Senate plowed through, I believe it was 114 bills or 124 bills, just back to back to back. So it was an agreed upon list of bills, including all the budgets. And that's, I think, maybe what you're referencing, I think, leader to note is said, hey, we'll come back and we will do the required, the things that are required by the Constitution, like passing a budget, going through all the Ways and Means items. But there are an unknown list that leadership is discussing, bills that they 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 don't like in particular, House of 2002. So I think that's one scenario that they could come to agree to come back and do the budgets. Or, you know, the both sides of the in their heels, and the session could end, in which case all those bills that are pending would die. And that is the good thing about us having gotten Senate Bill 644 through the process early. And that's, you know, as you recall, we had a discussion about whether or not we would accept an amendment in the in the House, and we said no, partially because I was kind of afraid something like this would happen. So fortunately, we said no. It and it went straight to the governor and it's signed. So we got our bill. But lots of other bills, most of the other bills are are kind of in between someplace awaiting concurrence or waiting Senate approval. I don't know the total number that have gotten through the entire process, but it's it's a small fraction of the total bills introduced.
Okay, so back in 2019, when those 120 something bills were agreed upon to crank through, how many were left to die? Like, what what percentage of the total bills moving at that point in time actually got to the end?
Good question. I have to go back and take a look. I think they got that through a lot of the bills.
A lot. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Most of the bills have been passing overwhelmingly. There are there one or two Republicans on the Senate floor who vote no every single on every single bill. R. Robinson is one of them. Dennis Luntigan votes no a lot of the time. Brian Belkis has voted no quite a bit. But, you know, most of the bills are, you know, when the full Senate was here, we're passing with, you know, 27 to two or 26 to three or 28 to one. We've got, we've had one Democrat Senator Chris Corsa quit triple bypass, and he's been out for a long period of time. So we haven't had a 30, haven't had a 30 votes, full 30 senators able to vote in quite a while.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. I was just trying to figure out which ones would actually get to that final that final opportunity. So knowing that a majority back in 2019 made it is good.
Okay, if that is everything, I'll go ahead and lead into the bill report for this week and the few requests for letters and another additional item we have. Does that sound good, Commissioner DeBones?
Yes, please.
Great. I'm going to start on page seven of this week's report, House Bill 2506. Commissioner Adair, I believe you had requested that we add this bill to the report, which expands the definition of a residential home and residential facilities that local governments can approve. And I don't have much background on this bill. Doug, I don't know if you do, but Commissioner Adair, I'm not sure. I'll turn it over to you if there's any thoughts or feedback you'd like to provide.
Yes, that's the one to help the WASCO 42 bad facility. I actually sent a letter in with Commissioner Kramer because he's really requesting this, and I feel like support on this side of the mountain is important. Is it, was it the second? Okay, so was it like 2506? Wasn't it like dash something? Isn't there a dash in there?
It was the dash nine.
Nine, that's what I thought. Thank you, Janice. Yeah. So I don't know if it's going to have any life or not, but I'm just trying to help our neighbors to the north because they're on this side of the mountain.
And I just got an update, Commissioner Darren. It looks like, and I apologize, I wasn't on last week's call. The board discussed and landed at a priority to support. So it looks like this was just a flag on this bill that remained for an extra week. So we'll go ahead and maintain that and remove the highlighting on this bill for for next week's report, if that works for you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Whitney.
You're welcome. Okay, page 10 of this week's report is the only other bill that we have flagged for discussion. You'll recall that on Wednesday, under other items, the board discussed two bills related to enterprise zones, and this is one of the bills that was a part of the letter that the board agreed to add the county's logo on to, but we haven't formally reviewed it. So this is more an administrative check in to make sure that you'd like staff to add this bill to the report in alignment with the position that you took through adding the letter, the logo on to the letter on Wednesday. Eric, I see you unmuted. I'll go ahead and turn it over to you if you have anything else to add.
Thanks, Whitney. What this bill does is the current minimum requirements for an enterprise zone project is $100 million and $25 million in the rural area. House Bill 3457 increases the minimum amount from 100 million to 150 million, and then from 25 million to 40 million in the rural area. And then it also places a CPI index so that that amount goes up each year if if the CPI goes up. So the economic development of Central Oregon is against this bill because it would limit the number of projects that are eligible for enterprise zones.
Thanks, Eric. And just for those that may not have been watching on Wednesday, the the letter that the county added its logo to was in opposition of this bill in House Bill 2199. So it would be an update to the report to note opposition to 3457.
So yeah, acknowledging that, is there do we take that position officially? It sounds like Commissioner Chang is going to say something.
I I support officially. I support officially signing on to this bill and adding our logo or signing up, adding our logo and signing on to this letter.
And opposition, so a position to oppose.
We didn't vote on this already.
You voted to.
We did the.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
We did the letter, and we did not take a position on our bill report for our lobbying efforts.
So second.
Yeah, it's just finalized. So all in favor of position of opposition?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Before I segue into the go ahead, Doug.
Whitney, if I could just jump in really quick on this one. This is one of the two bills up before the Joint Committee on Tax Expenditures. That's what I'm going to pop into here in a few minutes, 2199 and 3457. Not remembering the number right now, but anyway, the the path for this particular bill is uncertain because the it's believed that the Chair of the Senate Revenue Committee opposes it. So 2199 is maybe a little more likely to pass, but 3457 is probably less likely to pass. But there's a gigantic crowd of people waiting to testify or testifying right now in the Joint Tax Committee against both bills.
Thank you, Doug. Before we transition into the request for a letter of support and an additional item for health services, I just want to open things up. If any departments have any bills on the report or off the report that you'd like to flag for discussion. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and transition Commissioner earlier Commissioners earlier this week. We've sent some information from the Circuit Court to you that relates to Policy Option Package 101, which OJD has submitted, and this would provide additional funding to increase the number of pretrial release officers throughout the state locally. It looks like there would be a request for four pretrial release officers positions, and these would be employees of the court that meet with defendants at the jail and gather information about a person's risk to commit new offenses pending resolution of their case and to fail to appear for court if they're released from the jail. Currently, it sounds like there is one position locally that does this work, and that one position doesn't have capacity to meet with everyone held at the jail. And so there's a request that the board consider signing a letter of support in of this policy option package. I'll go ahead and pause there, Doug. I don't know if you have any Doug might have actually just, oh, there I see. If you have anything else to add, or if you have any familiarity with this, and then Commissioners, certainly if you have any questions.
No, nothing particular to add. I know the Ways and Means is very well aware of this pop request. Lots of people working on it, and and all those decisions are are in the process of being considered and hopefully made in the next few weeks.
And I think our pretrial officer is funded by our general fund, is my, if I'm remembering, that's just the same position. So Deshute County is taking a lead on this and done this work. This would be the state stepping up and doing it across the system and adding more capacity. So I'm supportive of taking that position, writing the letter. I looked at the letter. It could be edited slightly just for more Board of Commissioners tone to it. I have, so yeah, any other thoughts from the Commissioners?
And I would just add, I was able to connect with Captain Schultz on this request and get a little bit more background, and it sounds like the county through the Sheriff's Office is supporting the one position that we have locally. And Captain Schultz articulated that the Sheriff's Office very much supports increasing funding for this program. He noted that increasing support was the plan when the Sheriff's Office committed to to doing this work a couple years ago, and that this is a great time to provide this funding and that the program helps to improve safety in the community. So a lot of support coming from the Sheriff's Office for.
So the question is, I'm supportive of the letter, but how soon does that letter need to be put together, Whitney? The letter we have with a little modification?
You know, there isn't, we can look into that and follow up. Certainly, I think Janice and turning these, so I think we could get something to the board of a revised draft, probably then later today, do you think? Yeah, so I think we could turn this around fairly quickly, Commissioner Adair.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Chang?
I support that that direction.
Okay, yeah, so let's proceed with the letter. And we can, you know, vote on that here. This is a pretrial release officer letter of support. Is there a bill number specifically, Whitney? Or no, the Policy Option Package?
That's Pop 101.
Yep, Pop 101. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
There we go. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Last item I have flagged for today's meeting, Janice, I'll turn things over to you, is the Mossman follow up.
Thanks, Whitney. So I'm going to try to be brief. The Mossman order, if you recall, is the order that was issued in response to DRO, Disability Rights Oregon, bringing suit against the Oregon State Hospital for keeping members patients on aid and assist commitments longer than ideal or longer than best practice or longer than the law allows. And the Mossman order generated a lot of concern for counties because it really pushed the issue of responding to and supporting people on aid and assist commitment to the state hospital to the counties, basically by saying there is a specific length of time that these individuals can stay in the hospital regardless of their status or their mental health condition. In many instances, it's really dependent on the level of the charges, not necessarily the level of stability of the individual. And counties are required by law to receive these individuals back into the community and find adequate placement for them. That puts all of the liability, the burden, the pressure, the responsibility to respond to those folks back into counties. So a couple of counties, fives, courts have all brought suit and litigation and asked for a modification of the Mossman order to respond to that concern. They are asking now for counties to sign on as amici or amicai. I don't know the appropriate way to say that. Dave Doyle probably does.
Isn't it like amici or something?
It may be amici, sorry.
It's amicus, and it means friend of the court. So you could just say friend of the court brief.
Okay, that's way easier for me. But regardless, what it basically means is that we have a role in the litigation, but we are not parties to the litigation. So the risk of being a friend of the process is low, per Dave Doyle. We consulted with Dave and with county council from some other counties. The benefit is that we may have an opportunity for some input into the proposed modifications of the Mossman order to help benefit counties. So that was a lot, but Whitney and Nick and Eric and Dave all felt that we should at least get your Commissioner's support for joining as non-party participants.
That's why I thought it was really important that we do. And, you know, they're working on it, and they do need our support. So thank you for following through.
Yeah, I'm supportive. You know, a little bit of being at the table and being part of this is very important right now. So I'd be supportive of taking that position of an amicus.
I would support as well. Thank you for tracking this for us, Janice.
Yeah, thank you. I'll talk to Dave about what the next steps are. Holly was at the table too, and is also in support.
Okay, thank you. As you can tell, I'm at the airport right now, but is there any other topics or any other legislator joining us?
I don't see any legislators on the call currently. Thank you, Jen, for the reminder. Commissioner Adair, you had sent an email related to a gas transmission project that you were hoping to discuss today. I don't know if you'd like to discuss that today or at a later date, but turning things over to you in case you would.
Yes, that was a request for our opinion from Congressman Chavez de Reimer's office. And I'm not prepared to discuss it today, but maybe is that information shared with everybody?
We have not sent this out, but we can certainly circulate it to folks and discuss next week, if that sounds good.
That would, that would be great. They didn't say, oh, we need to know immediately. So I said I was working on it. So if you could do that, that would be lovely. Thank you.
That is all that I have. I'll go ahead and open things up in case there's any items for discussion. Commissioner DeBones, it looks like there are no additional items. Oh, I do see. It looks like we have a legislator or two joining. Angie, if we can promote, that'd be great.
Good morning, we're up, Levy. So thank you. There we go. Thanks for joining us. So this is Commissioner DeBones. I'm on a phone call today. It sounds like Representative Levy might have joined us. We're just winding up 30 minutes into a legislative call, taking a few positions, writing some letters. So if you're available with an update, please share.
Doug, do you want me to kick off?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead? Just give us kind of a sense of what's going on, what's happening with your bills and and what you see for the next week or two.
Well, I wish I had a crystal ball to be able to answer that and give you all a good answer. And right now, I simply don't. I think things are a stalemate, but I still remain hopeful. A lot of the bills that are important to Deschutes County are on the Senate side. And so this is not a great place to be, but I remain hopeful. I feel confident either way that the the budget bill will, you know, will get through in the money for housing. And all those things will get put in the budget. I'm concerned about the chip back. The the second SBE was for. So a tough spot, tough week, but it's not over till it's over.
We want to cover kind of the your perspective with the caucus perspective on where the revenue for the positive revenue forecast takes this and open things up hopefully for some of the projects.
Yeah, I mean, especially I think around water. So with the revenue forecast came in this week, it was $2 billion higher than expected. Certainly not an economist, but I'm not sure how you get $2 billion off, but in a good way. So I welcome that anytime, really. So what, but with the way that our law is structured, and all that money is not money that we can put into into the budget, a lot of it will be returned to the kicker. So but as far as education, I think a lot of our drought stuff, it just opens up a lot more conversations that were closed off. And so I feel really, really good about that. I would say the one thing I will point out in the revenue forecast, which I don't think is as relevant to Deschutes County, but it is important to the state and our overall revenue, is just the amount of people that we are having age out of the workforce for revenues in the future, and we have a lot of out migration. And for the last few decades, we've only had in migration, and that affects our revenues in the long in the long term. And so really making sure that Portland is a place that people want to live, again, not such a Deschutes County issue. But for the overall health of the state is really important so that we have high But for the overall health of the state is really important so that we have high earners staying in Portland, so that we have the revenue for the state.
Yeah, that jumped out at me as well as the declining population and the impacts on revenue. And in not this biennium or maybe even the next one, but in the 27 to 29, 29 to 31 biennium, the economists pointed out that will begin to take a toll with retiring population and people leaving the state. The other thing that I found at our stand, I pointed this out to the, the commission earlier on, is that the gigantic increase in the number of Oregon filers who are now in the top category. It went from 3.5% of that 9.9% category to 5.3%. That's a gigantic jump in the number of high income earners, which is one of the reasons revenues were up significantly. And then the other thing is the, with the corporate kicker being so high, that should free up money for the school safety bill that you have to pay for an expansion of that bill.
Yes, so I mean, I'm not shy about that. My, my number one priority and I just think it is so important and I'm really thankful. There's a lot of people on this call that have helped to facilitate that. I talked to the speaker and we're getting it in the budget. So even if something goes wrong, we will secure that money for Alyssa's law. We can come back into the policy later, but that school safety money will be there and that the money to integrate our CAD system into Deschutes County will be there. Pending something crazy happening, but that is, that's the goal, is that we will secure it in a budget. And so as far as getting stuff funded, I'm really excited. I'm really hopeful for our education budget. A lot of our schools just need a little bit extra. And I mean, and especially for our drought package as well, I think. It's all, it's all good news, except for we just don't have people there to facilitate the, the good work that we can be doing. And Doug, do you have anything to add or want me to add more?
I don't know. Commissioners, do you have any, any questions?
Well, just to thank you for stepping in and being part of the process. You know, these legislative sessions are getting more and more dynamic, contentious, partisan, whatever it is. But, you know, thank you for, for representing us.
Thanks, Commissioner. And I will say on the House side, we have engaged in really great bipartisan work. It's definitely a tale of, tale of two cities when it comes to how these different contentious bills were handled. On the House side, we've been, most, a lot of our bills are, 87% of our bills are bipartisan. Like we have really good relationships. We really worked and the speaker on our side has really worked to facilitate good relationships. Unfortunately, on the Senate side, that didn't happen. That's kind of where the breakdown is. But if you want good faith in your government on the House side, it's really been great. And that's been one of my big surprises as a freshman is how much how much bipartisan work is. That is really truly the vast majority of it. The other rep Levy and I are on several bills as, or a couple of bills as chief sponsors together. So that is happening. I'm sorry that I feel sad that this is the headline because it doesn't reflect my experience of all the actual good work that has happened in this session.
I echo that. I pointed out a strange situation because you go into the committees, like I was just enjoying tax and it's every member of the House and the Senate R and D are, are there. It's only on the Senate floor that you have this quorum issue. So they're all in the building for the most part, but just not walking the 36 steps to go down into the Senate chamber.
And Doug, should we transition to the UGB issue?
Yeah. Nick, you want to take that? I know that we had asked if either you, Rep Levy or Rep Crep would send a letter to LC to ask for an interpretation. And it sounds like that letter has been sent. So thank you very much. And we kind of look forward to hearing what they have to say. Nick, you're, you're the policy expert in this, in this area. So I don't know if you want to add anything.
Nothing else. I was just going to unmute myself to thank you, Representative, for assisting us and seeking the opinion from legislative council. That's really helpful. And I hope you could see that it was a very respectful dialogue we have at the city. We just have different interpretations and we're all aiming for the same outcome. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Always happy to help. And hopefully we'll get that fairly soon. And then I'm also open to continuing dialogue with DLCD to get an exception should legal counsel come down the opposite way. I know that there isn't really an opportunity to have any UGB expansions for a lot, you know, like this, but I do think that there's space for a DLCD exception. A one-off, if you will. But I would rather go the legal opinion route first.
Yeah, I really appreciate the quick turnaround on that and, and your staff, you know, let me know immediately that that was taking place. By the way, you've got great staff, so we really like working with you.
I really do. Really amazing staff that are very on top of things. One other issue is I put forward a land supply bill. And there's, there's a matching bill in the Senate, which takes basically Stevens Road and makes it a model pilot for the state. It certainly has not been without contention or a lot of contention. And probably not, there's probably not a path for this session, but something that we're going to work on in the interim. And so if anyone here wants to be part of that conversation of how we can increase land supply, expedite our urban reserves. Or in for places like Sisters, who has been, you know, five years to try and expand their UGB. They have no urban reserves. I certainly would welcome any expertise to how we can, you know, keep our, similar to Stevens Road, contiguous parcels, complete communities, maintaining our environmental values by recognizing that the game has changed a bit and we're in a housing crisis.
Yeah, thanks very much for that. I know that that's, that's really the, the, I won't say counterbalance, but the the, the bill that needs to go along with anything we do on House Bill 3414, which is kind of the, the housing enforcement office at DLCD, which has really lit the city's air on fire.
And mine.
Yeah, yeah. So I do understand in that bill that the governor's office has finally come to the table and finally had the first negotiating session with developers last night. So I haven't heard how that meeting went. I'll, I'll keep you all posted. So.
Yeah, I haven't heard how it went either. I'm very anxious to learn since there has been no movement on negotiations from the governor's office.
Yeah.
I'll say, I see that's kind of four companion bills. The infrastructure funding, Pam Marsh's bill. I don't see any how we can truly get into our urban reserves without the money for infrastructure. So I think her bill is huge. Land supply, I, 314, 3414, I could take it or leave it, but I, I see it as part of the package. And then also the other, Pam Marsh's other bill for money for middle and workforce housing. I think the combination will actually get housing built. But I think they are, they, they all work together.
Yeah, it's very complicated process. They need to complicate it, set a solution. So, yeah. Yeah, I just, I'll just mention, we're still hopeful for courthouse funding in the Ways and Means process. The lottery bonding revenue was flat, wasn't up. People were gambling the same amount, more or less. But that was still a lot of gambling going on. So there should be plenty of money in there for, you know, and the, what I told Ways and Means when I chatted with them this week is this is just for the interests, the additional costs of construction inflation, which is something they're considering for all the projects. So we didn't ask for actual construction money. And we're, we're still not. We're just asking for the, the inflationary portion on the on the, on the courthouse project. So there's that. Just, you know, I know you know that we're, we've got a lot of priority bills on our list for behavioral health, workforce, behavioral health issues, substance abuse treatment facilities. So we'll send you an updated copy of that, that smaller list, but those are all important issues for the county as well.
Yeah, I think, especially when it comes to behavioral health, health and substance abuse, this extra money is probably the biggest win for that area. I think a lot of that stuff was being tampered down when we were doing a, we thought a cuts budget. So I, I'm really, really encouraged by that.
Representative Levy, this is, this is Commissioner Chang, and I just wanted to thank you for all of your support on this UGB outdoor shelter issue, housing, school safety and, and other things and for modeling, as you were describing, modeling for the state senate in the House, the way that the legislative session should work.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I hopefully 3440 gets to the floor. We're so close.
So too.
Right there.
I know. I know.
I'm happy to take any open questions before we up to.
I have a question. So this Holly Harris, I'm behavioral health director here. Hi, nice to meet you. I was curious if with this new revenue forecast, if there's going to be any influx of money to the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission's budget in terms of impact spending, if we think that might change?
I saw the governor had outlined where she kind of saw some of the money going. And I know part of it was going to criminal justice. I don't know where it exactly is going. So I will pull that up and I will email you and see exactly where that breaks down. I know some money is flowing to criminal justice. I just don't know the pot in criminal justice.
And, and the reason I ask is impact spending is, helps support our Deschutes County Stabilization Center. So that's a big piece of our budget that as I understand right now, won't be there after June of 2024. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I will find out and get back with you. Any other questions? I did such a good job and answered all of them. Well, thank you all.
Yeah, great. Thanks for joining us. This is Commissioner DeBonne, just saying thank you again.
Thanks, Commissioner. And if anyone needs anything, please email me and my staff is always, and I are always so help, happy to be helpful in any way that we can.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Sorry, this is Janice Gerson, Director of Health Services. So Holly works closely with me and I also oversee public health. And we noticed that when the governor commented on the additional revenue in the forecast, there was definitely a call out for housing and for behavioral health services homelessness. But there really was no direct mention of public health. And as you know, public health lost enormous funding with the end of the emergency and the common phenomenon is that public health then spirals back down into an underfunded status. And so I didn't know if there was any opportunities for advocacy to ensure that public health is addressed.
And there are, the final decisions haven't been made. If there's a specific request around public health, I'm happy to write a letter and do some advocacy. The more specific, the better. With an exact financial ask, because conversations are still open.
Thank you.
Very nice to hear a question as well. Welcome.
Awesome. You can give him all the hard questions now.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you all. Bye.
Thanks.
I'm happy to answer any questions. I will say there is just a level of uncertainty about the work that we're trying to do the last six weeks of session. So we are still moving ahead with the work that we are required to do, but to what end, I can't tell you at this point.
Yeah, thanks. We, I went through the very positive revenue forecast, which is very encouraging and should open up an opportunity to, to fund many of the programs that are important to Deschutes County residents and courthouse, behavioral health, homelessness, housing, et cetera. Quite a bit about use as well.
No, and I think we, actually, I think in some respects, starting the session with a being conservative, what we thought the revenue was going to be was a pretty good exercise, right? They, they vetted through agency budgets and budgets and tried to like really make a list of prioritization. And when you had a little extra money, it's not necessarily an excuse just to spend on everything. But I think that prioritization that we went through and the being in a session actually was a real valuable exercise. And so when we can figure out ways to make sure those priorities are funded and then sort of go to that next tier, I think it's it's been a positive exercise. My frustration is we've been working for four months on that process and what policies and what budget prioritization should sort of rise to the top. And we are not getting the people's work done at this point. And so my frustration is, is this, is like I, I signed up for this job to show up to work every day, which is what I did in my first session. And in 2022, there was a ballot measure saying, no, the voters really want people to show up for work every single day, or you can't get, keep that job. And that's not happening right now. And so things like that on our list, the Hawthorne Bridge, the county courthouse, Part of Oregon Program, OSU Cascades. I am concerned about funding being available for very local things, but I'm also concerned about what the policies that are going to help to tackle some of our biggest issues, right? We've identified housing and homelessness as top priorities and we have budgets for that and we have policies for that. We've identified public safety as top issues. You know, I'm the health judiciary care and we vetted through my committee, recommendations from law enforcement, recommendations from district attorneys has helped to address some of those issues. And we have things sitting waiting for action. So I'm frustrated, to say the least.
I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you very much. I'll say thanks for taking time to join us today. This is Commissioner DeBonne. We've been, you know, following everything, taking some positions, doing our advocacy work. And, yeah, I mean, it's, it is just very dynamic right now. So to say, I want to thank you for representing us. That's all we can do at this time.
No, I appreciate that, Commissioner. So I'm, I'm going to still, you know, we are still proceeding ahead with sort of the, you know, the second part of what session where we, the budget stuff is, is the primary focus for the next four weeks. So we'll continue to sort of do as much work as we can between now and the end of session.
Appreciate that. Now, we had a question on the Criminal Justice Commission a moment ago. Holly, was that you?
It was. I was asking about impact spending, whether the new revenue forecast might actually allow impact spending to continue past June of 2024. As you know, it helps fund our stabilization center quite substantially.
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. I can connect with Ken and I can connect with people on that, that I used to be on that Ways and Means Budget Committee. So I can connect with folks and circle back to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Rep Crep, could I ask a question? Ms. Stevie Holcomb?
Sure.
I was actually, I was going to raise it after legislators had left, just because I wasn't sure, but I think that your position might be able to help shed some light on this. So contrary to kind of some of the good news with the revenue forecast, the DOC budget and the public safety kind of system isn't, isn't a top priority as it appears. And in addition, there's kind of been a new wrinkle that's been unveiled, which is apparently in ballot measure 110, there's a portion that indicates that any cost savings or cost avoidance that occurs as a result of ballot measure 110 will be, you know, added up and those, that money will be then removed from the public safety system and put into, you know, presumably substance use and or treatment and or behavioral health pots. So right now, the DOC budget, of course, I think is sitting at about a $40 million cut from last biennium. And this figure that's been kind of raised, I believe the CJC is responsible for calculating what that savings, that quote unquote cost avoidance or savings is. And it's, I don't believe that money is set to sort of be even further come out from the DOC budget, but it's coming out from somewhere in the public safety system world. And I just wondered if you knew, if you could shed some light on what that process is and or what you are hearing about DOC budget.
Yeah, and I can. Yeah, and I, and I'll, you know, let me check in with Jeremiah a little bit on that. So I think what had happened with some of the budgets in general is they had been sort of like there was conservative budgets put together and then there was potential for extra allocations for some of the budgets, depending on what the budget forecast was. I don't know where DOC is in that process. You know, you have for variety reasons, you know, we have prison numbers have gone down and you know that the number of people who are actually on probation have, have gone down. That's either an opportunity to reduce your budget or it's an opportunity to reexamine how we fund and what we should be funding in Department of Corrections budget. So let me check in with Jeremiah on that. The savings from one it's an interesting, I just got off a call about the public defender budget and like in some respects, in, in theory, we would have had less, we would have needed less public defenders. we would need less public defenders because, you know, X number of drug cases went away. And in that budget space, we are not seeing it for a variety of other reasons. That budget is going to go up because we've been really, really struggling with public defender retention. So that study would be, I don't know, very difficult to calculate as, as far as I can tell. So let me, I can check in with Ken and I can check in with Jeremiah and I can circle back to you. I mean, maybe the easiest thing to do is just schedule meetings next week. I can have my office do that, DB and.
Yeah, that's greatly appreciated. Yeah, just kind of figure out what that, what that's. Well, yeah, what's going on and what the right size is, is a great, great question that we're willing to, willing and love to have with you or any other group of legislators.
Well, you, my guess is you have a greater proportionate of medium and higher risk, even though you have a lower number. My guess is you have a greater proportion of higher, medium risk folks on your books now. Okay. Yeah, I can do that. I'll reach out and DB, I'll reach out for a meeting because I have a couple of other things I want to check base with you as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Rio, I just want to say, Rep Rep, that I really enjoyed working with your staff this session. I've known Andy for a long time, but Andy and Ashley are a great team and they've been very responsive every time we come and ask for a meeting or ask questions. So I appreciate the openness of your, your office to help us out this session.
No, Doug, and I really appreciate that. Well, I hired well and they're better than I am. Doug, you've been, and I will say, just working with the counties, the session has been I mean, very easy. You and your team has been super responsive as well. So I appreciate that. I apologize. I have another, I'm like triple booked today. Holly, your question might be super easy. I might just be able to say yes and send you an email. And then DB, I think our conversation is going to be a little harder. All right. Nice seeing everybody then.
Thank you. Great to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner DeBonne, the only other insert of more of a housekeeping item, wanting to confirm that the board would like to maintain the regularly scheduled meeting for next Friday, which is May 26th. I know the board will be in budget committee meetings all week. Knowing that that will be a long week, just wanting to confirm that you'd like to, to meet next Friday.
Yeah, well, at this point, what are the commissioners' thoughts? My daughters, maybe we, we don't have a meeting unless something triggers us to have a meeting.
I have the LGAC meeting, the Local Governmental Authority meeting in Salem Friday morning. And I really like being able to talk to the interim director of OHA in person. So I'm planning on going to Salem Friday morning. And you know how my connection is, if I get past Detroit, I can reconnect to the call if we have it. But otherwise I won't be, I won't be on.
Any thoughts, Commissioner Chang?
I'll be out for the Memorial Day holiday after Thursday afternoon.
Yep, that's kind of one tea tree. How about we don't have a meeting next Friday then?
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move that from postponed.
We can put together, we can put together a summary if anything new comes up, but a written summary.
Yep. And then, yeah, we can bring things up, you know, either at the budget day, if there's anything during the week, just a side item. And then the week after also during our regular board meetings.
And Doug, I'll plan on meeting you somewhere in Salem on Friday then.
Sounds good. It could be a big day for Ways and Means.
Hey, if there's nothing else, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.